Two minutes till the beginning of the meeting, and I like to start meetings very promptly. All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. There's a lot of us here tonight. Welcome to the March 19th West Ocean Township Board of Supervisors Meeting, and we will begin the meeting tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please down. We have a packed house and a very extensive agenda here. I'm going to make a couple of announcements. There should be copies of the agenda in the back of the room if anybody would like a copy. And this meeting may be audio and video recorded by third parties. We're also streaming live on YouTube. So the first item tonight is going to be the swearing-in of Patrick Hoover and Patrick Greider as police officers in the West Ocean Township Police Department. Very exciting night, and I'm going to turn it over to Chief Carroll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's important to acknowledge the people in the room tonight that came out to see these two gentlemen before they be at West Ocean, consider ourselves a family. And I think it's evident by the people that came out to witness this that we're excited to have you two join our family. It's not very often we get to swear in two officers. So tonight we get the Patricks. We're excited about that. So without further ado, can I have Mr. Patrick Hoover come forward? Your uncle's going to hold the Bible for you tonight. Just a quick bio from Mr. Patrick Hoover. He graduated from Abbott Grove High School in 2015 and went on to attend the California University of Pennsylvania. In 2019, he graduated with his bachelor's degree in criminal justice. And he comes to us from Chester County Southern Regional Police Department, where he began his employment there as a police officer in 2014. Patrick is accompanied tonight by his parents, great-grandmother, grandparents, and his brother. And obviously, his uncle is going to hold the Bible. So, your honor, thank you.
Mr. Chair, welcome. All right, please repeat after me. It's my honor to hear you. Don't be rude to him. I, Patrick B. Hoover,
I, Patrick B. Hoover,
do solemnly swear and affirm
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
that I will support, obey, and defend
That I will support, obey, and defend.
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of this Commonwealth
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
and the ordinances and laws of West Ocean Township.
and the ordinances and laws of West Ocean Township.
I further acknowledge
I further acknowledge
that I will uphold and enforce the law
that I will uphold and enforce the law
without consideration of a person's
without consideration of a person's
race, color, sex
race, color, sex.
condition, religious creed
condition, religious creed.
sexual orientation
sexual orientation.
age
age.
national origin
national origin.
ancestry
ancestry.
handicap
handicap.
or disability. Congratulations.
Congratulations. If I can ask Mr. Patrick Greider to come up and take your wife Alexa to hold the Bible. Well, Patrick graduated from the Hempfield High School in Lancaster County in 2007. He went on to attend Temple University. And in 2011, he graduated with his degree in criminal justice. He comes to us from the Philadelphia Police Department, where he's been employed as a police officer since 2014. Tonight, he's accompanied by his wife Alexa, his parents, his in-laws, and his sister. Your honor, without further ado.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please repeat after me. Raise your right hand. I, Patrick James Greider
I, Patrick James Greider
do solemnly swear and affirm
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
that I will support
that I will support
obey
obey.
and defend
and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania
the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
and the laws of this Commonwealth
and the laws of this Commonwealth.
and the ordinances of West Ocean Township
and the ordinances of West Ocean Township.
I further acknowledge
I further acknowledge
that I will uphold and enforce
that I will uphold and enforce
the law without consideration
the law without consideration
of a person's race
of a person's race.
color
color.
sex
sex.
condition
condition.
religious creed
religious creed.
sexual orientation
sexual orientation.
age
age.
national origin
national origin.
ancestry
ancestry.
handicap
handicap.
or disability. Congratulations.
Congratulations. I think it's important we also acknowledge that none of this is possible without the board's continued support, support of the police department and the mission that we're given to protect the citizens of West Ocean Township. But thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you so much, and on behalf of the board, welcome to the Patricks, to the West Ocean Police Department. It's great to have you here. And thank you all, as always, for all of your hard work in the township. We really appreciate it, and the entire department. So thank you. If you would like to take the opportunity to take any photos, we can give you a few minutes to do that. Otherwise, you can step outside and do it. It's your call. Go outside? Okay. I'll give the room a couple minutes to clear out them. Thank you so much. I think that's mostly everybody out. So we're going to move on to item number four, which is public comment. If there is anybody in the audience tonight that wishes to make a comment on an item that is not on tonight's agenda, now is the time to do it. Does anybody have a public comment? Yes, sir. Can you come up to the podium, please, and state your name?
Hi, Harry J. Travis Jr. I went to the Zell boarding yesterday at the West Ocean Shopping Center. And my concern is the traffic situation that new stores targeted at Chick-fil-A and R &amp; Co. because they want to with the entrance where the non-light is, they want people to come in that way and not use a light on the corner of Chappellwood Avenue and Haley Pike, where the light is, or the Acme. They were talking about using the center lane. If you're coming in from Westchester, instead of going into Shopping Center with a light, they were talking about using the non-light lane, which is a category with Pat's Avenue, to make a lot less going to Chick-fil-A and Target. And I think that was a very dangerous idea because of the scope of the traffic. Because I live right on Haley Pike, right down near the light, or down to the ramp there. And there's a lot of traffic that comes off the bypass going into Tammer and Shopping Center. And there's also sun glare sometimes, like during the fall-wintertime when the sun is setting. It's maybe in the west, and the sun glare is really, really bad. So they were talking about putting like two axes on the corner of the, going into the Shopping Center, a non-light side. So that would make people stop. It'd leave the area open. So when people wanted to go to the Chick-fil-A or the Target entrance there, they would do that. But that would also back up traffic, I think. And I think some people wouldn't even stop. And it'd be just too much confusion that they should be using the light of the corner where in front of the Acme to come in at. And, you know, I just wanted to mention that, that it should be looked at. Because there's going to be more traffic now because where people don't go to Target, where people definitely don't check the light, especially in drier time. So that's all.
Thank you so much for your comment.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And I assure you, this board, and, you know, we're working with the developer to make sure that traffic is handled and seamless as possible.
I know it's possible.
Is there any other public comment tonight? Yes, Ms. Swart, can you come up, please?
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Margie Swart. And it's just baffling to me that I'm sitting here looking at an email from 10 years ago that kind of memorializes my first meeting that I attended here. But I wanted to bring meeting minutes to your attention from August 14th, 2013. And I'm hoping that staff can go back and look at the official record and ensure that there is a binder, because the minutes read, "Ms. Swart distributed a binder to all supervisors and staff with information documenting why she believes the escrow policy needs to be changed." The exhibit with all documents as presented is attached and will be part of these meeting minutes. So I want to make sure, and I would really like confirmation from the township, that that binder with that information is still there. And why that is important is what prompted me to come to that meeting in 2013 was I actually have a printout from the newsletter, Winter Quarter of 2013, that mentioned the woodlands at Greystone. And that there's subdivision and land development report that there were 598 dwelling units going to be developed there. And I was new to the township and experienced some difficulty with our developer and escrow amounts. And the township had their hands tied because they didn't hold enough escrow. And I knew back then that the township didn't look into my concerns and ensure that enough escrow was being withheld, that this very large development could someday be in the same predicament that me and my just 11 neighbors had. And I just didn't want this large community to go through that. So if staff would look into that, I'd really greatly appreciate it. Because if that binder is not there and that information that perhaps the board would be interested in is not there, then I wish to pursue. But that would be tampering with official government documents and that we have a real issue on our hands. Another thing I'm asking the board to look at, and the reason I'm bringing this up, tonight on the Treasury Report, there is a reimbursement for some work boots and work pants for an employee. And that employee signed a I actually have this he signed a form that I hereby provide my irrevocable notice to the township that I shall resign from employment with the West Ocean Township Police Department effective on 3/1/2021. And that is in compliance with the state law regarding drop participation. And so I question whether or not that employee that signed a form revoking his employment with the township should have been rehired again. There's nothing personal against him, but I just want to make sure we're complying with state law that after he received the very large drop payment and the very generous benefit, that we turn around and hired him almost immediately. And then, this is a touchy one. And this is the last one. Thank you for your patience. Regarding the civil rights lawsuit against the township, does our insurance carrier cover those legal fees for us to fight that? I'm curious. Does the insurance carrier handle the defense of that?
Yes.
Okay. And who is our insurance carrier that's handling that?
Selective Insurance.
Selective. I ask that because, I don't know if Ms. Camp remembers this, but the plaintiff in that lawsuit, I had one encounter with outside of the walls of this room. And that one encounter elicited a still have the envelope, certified letter from the township regarding that encounter. And I believe that this communication may perhaps be beneficial to the township's defense. And I don't know that they would ever know about this letter or know what I think is important. So I will, just wanted to let you know, I will be reaching out to Selective and offering this information to them. Who knows? It might be beneficial to the defense as well. So I'll let them fight it out and forth. But I wanted you all to know that I have this information. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Are there any other public comments tonight? Okay. Here we're done. Then we'll move on to item number five, which is the discussion and possible awarding of the 2024 West Ocean Township Paving Program bids. Mr. Beishor, did you want to introduce this?
Hi, this is Madam Chair. So before the board this evening are the bid results for the township's 2024 paving program and award recommendations of Carol Engineering. I've outlined a list of roads scheduled to be paved this year. They are a partial section of Airport Road from Green Hill Road to Ward Avenue, Applegate Drive, David Lane, Ember Drive, Empress Road, Baller Road, Stony Brook Lane, Topaz Drive, and two sections of Warren Road stopping at Sylvan Road. Did I miss anything, Mark? Yeah, thank you. The total mileage outlined for paving is 3.8 miles. We held a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting on February 20th, and the bids were open on February 29th. There were eight bids received. They ranged from the low bidder of Glasgow Inc. of $835,400 to a high bidder, which was GMB Construction of $1,195,973.44. On reviewing our budget, we allocated $1.1 million to the 2024 paving program in the general fund and the State Highway 8 Fund. And the low bid amount for Glasgow Inc. represents a number that's 24% below budget, so roughly $265,000. On reviewing the bid results, Glasgow Inc. is the apparent low bidder, and this would be their fourth project that they've completed for the township if awarded the contract. They previously completed the paving programs in 2015, and 2018, and last year in 2023. And speaking with Mark, they have been good to work within the task. So based on the bid results and the information outlined, we would recommend awarding the bid for the township's 2024 paving program to Glasgow Inc. in the amount of $835,400, based on their bid dated February 29th, 2024, as recommended by Carol Engineering in her letter dated March 5th, 2024.
All right, thank you very much. Any board discussion or questions?
Yeah, I have a question for Mark. The 3.8 miles seems a little light versus our normal schedule. Don't we normally typically do more closer to five miles a year?
I consider the Applegate neighborhood, which is Applegate Drive to Topaz, Empress, and one more. Four roads and that. They're extremely wide. So I kind of thought you guys should come down a little bit. So our square yard is probably closer to four and a half miles.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Mark. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, when would the paving begin?
I think we've kind of, I have a project, a PICO project, that I'm watching on Power Drive. And it's kind of told to the contractor that we look at probably to figure out the machine to allow that PICO project to finish up.
And that runs through the summer typically on Sunday?
It'll probably, it sometimes takes three weeks, it sometimes takes eight. As I said, Glasgow expects it to be three quarters.
Is there any public comment or questions on the paving bids? Yes, Ms. Swart.
I just wanted to make a comment. I also noticed the same thing that Mr. Walsh did, that it seemed light. But I was pleased because in years past, I've asked about the five miles. And the previous director of Public Works would just say, we need five miles, whether they need it or not, we need five miles. And I, that just didn't make sense to me. If it didn't need five miles, didn't need to be repaved, we shouldn't be paying just because we set an arbitrary number of few miles to be in. And then also, it's nice to see all these contractors that submitted bid bids. All the years I've been watching, sometimes it's been as light as two or three. So whatever you're doing, like the fact that it's generating more interest and competition.
Prior to 2023, the pre-bid meeting was mandatory. And we made the decision prior to the 2023 paving program to make it non-mandatory to try and increase the number of bidders through the process.
Just a comment, we want to resurface all our streets 15-year times advantage, probably closer to six miles. 15 years, five miles. 20 years, four and a half miles. Some roads will last 15 years, some roads will last 20.
Okay.
Mark Bligh, what kind of quality control will it be over, you know, the paving project? How will they determine that they're doing what they should be doing?
Well, we'll have a Carol inspector out there watching every day. I'll be out there quite a bit. So that's pretty much it.
Don't you take coring samples also?
We do. We'll take coring samples and things to allow for density and action.
And all that's documented with the Coring Samples Survey Agenda.
We're required to do that.
Okay, does somebody wish to make a motion then to approve the bid for Glasgow Inc. for $835,400?
I'll make, I'll second that motion.
All right, thanks very much. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
And thanks for everybody who worked on that. Okay, moving on to number, item number six, which is the issuance of conditional use decision and order for conditional use application number two down to 2023, proposing the construction of a convenience store with gas pumps at 929 South High Street Parkway Shopping Center in the C1 Neighborhood Commercial zoning district. Because this is a conditional use application, I'm going to hand it over to our solicitor, Ms. Camp.
Thank you. So Parkway, 929 SH LLC and 929 SH Realty Group LP, they were the applicant. They filed a conditional use application in September requesting conditional use approval under a specific section of the zoning ordinance. It's 84-18.I4. They're seeking approval to build a 5,330-square-foot Wawa convenience store with 16 fueling, excuse me, fueling stations at the existing Parkway Shopping Center. That property is located at 929 South High Street. The, if granted approval, the applicant would demolish 28,727 square feet of the existing shopping center building, leaving 20,533 square feet of the shopping center building. They would build the proposed Wawa convenience store in the front of the shopping center. The board conducted public hearings on the application on November 20th, 2023, December 21st, 2023, and January 30th, 2024. Mr. Wolman was not on the board for the first two hearings, so the applicant did agree on the record that he could read the transcripts and participate in tonight's decision. So that is something that's noted in the decision. So what happened is after, and there were several parties, all who are listed in this decision that I have before me, all of the parties, the applicant agreed to them, the party's status. They were given the opportunity to present evidence and to cross-examine the applicant's witnesses. So what we do is after the evidentiary record is closed, we did give the parties an opportunity to submit proposed findings of fact, conclusions of law, and proposed order. Under the state law, the board has to render a decision at a public meeting within 45 days. The applicant was gracious enough to grant us an extension to tonight. I think we're a couple days past the 45, so we appreciate that. And what I do is I then have meetings, and the board is able to deliberate and provide their comments to me on whether they believe that the applicant met the burden of proof. So in a conditional use process, it means that the use is allowed in the district provided that the applicant meets all the criteria in the zoning ordinance for that specific use. And there are also general standards that all conditional use applicants have to demonstrate compliance with. So the two main sections are 84-57.12. That's the convenience store regulations. They have to meet all of those regulations. And then there's, as I said, more subjective standards in Section 84-75. So the board went very carefully through the transcript, went very carefully through all the evidence that was presented, and then provided their comments to me. I then compiled them to a draft decision and have circulated that decision to the board. So I'm going to read the, there are findings of fact, which is again based on the testimony and evidence presented at the hearings. There's conclusions of law based on that, those facts. And then there's also a proposed order. We're not going to read the whole decision. The decision is 38 pages long. The conclusions of law, which then lead to the decision, I'll highlight the main ones. The first is that applicant has not proven compliance with the criteria in Section 84-57-12F. And that section requires for any convenience store of the ingress and egress from the property to be designed to promote safe and convenient travel. Second conclusion, applicant has not proven compliance with the criteria in 84-57-12H, which prohibits outdoor display of products. The testimony was that they intend to display and sell ice and propane from outside of the store. As far as the more subjective standards, the conclusions are that applicant did not prove by a fair preponderance of credible evidence that improvements to streets and highways contiguous to the property as part of the improvements for the proposed conditional use will be sufficient to prevent adverse traffic impacts caused by the proposed convenience store use as required by Section 84-75A1A. The next one is applicant did not prove by a fair preponderance of credible evidence that the capacity of the road network, which provides access to the property, shall not lower shall not lower the level of service of the intersection below a level of service C when you add the incremental increase in traffic attributable to the proposed convenience store. And that is required by section 84-75-A-1-E. The next one is that applicant did not prove by a fair preponderance of credible evidence that the interior traffic circulation at the proposed convenience store will be adequate to provide safe and convenient circulation for users of the facility, visitors of the facility, employees of the facility, and emergency access vehicles. And that is a standard that's required under 84-75-A-1-F. The next one is that applicant did not prove by a fair preponderance of credible evidence that the facility provides safe and convenient pedestrian access and internal circulation within the grounds of the facility, particularly for points of access from the facility, meaning the convenience store, to the parking areas. And that is required by section 84-75-A-1-G. So the final conclusion is because of applicant's failure to prove compliance with the sections that I just recited, the board must deny the conditional use. There's some discussion that goes into some of the testimony and some of the concerns that the board raised. But the final order, again, based on those conclusions of law, is that now, this 19th day of March, 2024, upon consideration of the application and the board's findings, that applicant failed to prove compliance with section 84-57-12-F, 84-57-12-H, 84-75-A-1-A, 84-75-A-1-E, 84-75-A-1-F, and 84-75-A-1-G, the board votes to deny the application and conditional use. So that is the proposed decision. As I said, the board has provided me their comments that led to this decision being drafted as it is. The board gave me back. If I made typographical mistakes or additional facts that they wanted me to add based on the record, so it's now before the board. If anybody has any questions on the draft decision or any addition of comments or concerns, I'm happy to answer those questions now from the board.
Thank you, Ms. Camp. Does the board wish to make any comments or have any questions at this time? Okay, hearing none. We'll open the floor for public comment. Does anybody wish to make a public comment? Hearing none.
Do you have a motion?
I'm just going to say thank you.
Well, it hasn't been voted on yet, so let's get a motion.
Is there a motion by the board to accept the decision and order to deny conditional use application number two dash 2023?
I'll hold on to that motion.
I will second that motion.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other public comment on the motion?
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. White. Dr. White.
Evening, West Coast and Township. After thinking about this came before planning commission several times, I agree with the decision. It's good to see businesses expand on the one hand, but then how much are going to be impacting the surrounding areas? So I would agree with the decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. White. All right, let's take a vote then. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Okay. Moving on to item number seven, which is the issuance of a conditional use decision and order for conditional use application number one dash 2024 for Hannah Harley-Davidson, proposing to conduct motorcycle sales and service at property located at 897 South Matlock Street in the I-2 Light Industrial Zoning District. And as with the first conditional use application, I'm going to hand this over to Ms. Camp.
Thank you. So when there's no parties that participate in the hearing other than the applicant, you don't have to write a formal decision with all the findings of fact, conclusions of law, discussion, all that. So this was a fairly straightforward hearing. There were no parties. The board was very much in favor of this. They actually changed the ordinance to allow it. So the order is, and now this 19th day of March, the West Coast and Township Board hereby grants conditional use approval to Hannah Harley-Davidson pursuant to section 84-38A-17-C of the West Coast and Township zoning ordinance, as it was amended in ordinance number one of 2024, adopted on March 5th, 2024, to use the existing building at 897 South Matlock Street for sale of motorcycles and related merchandise and a repair shop for motorcycles, subject to applicant's compliance with the following conditions. The approved use shall be conducted in compliance with conditional use application and all evidence and testimony presented at the hearing. The approved use shall comply with the township zoning ordinance and all other relevant regulations in the code. Applicants shall consult with Pendot to determine if the proposed US Route 202 High Street Interchange project has any impact on the property with respect to possible right-of-way acquisition, and they shall report the findings to the township engineer. And I will note that the applicant did that through an email that I shared with the board. The fourth one is that they shall retain a landscape consultant. You shall review and provide comments on the rendered landscape plan, which was presented at the hearing. The township landscape consultant shall advise if that landscape plan proposes planting of non-native species, and if it does suggest replacement native plantings, applicant must plan all the landscaping on that plan. And I will note that the applicant today sent over a revised landscaping plan that we will then send to our consultant. Five is applicant shall be prohibited from using residential streets in and around the property for purposes of test-driving motorcycles. Six is that they must verify their sufficient sewer capacity for their use, and if necessary, purchase the additional capacity from the sewer authority. There shall be no outdoor storage of merchandise. This does not prohibit display of motorcycles outside while the dealership is open for business. Applicants shall not lease any portion of the parking lot to third parties for storage or any other use. And this decision is binding on both the applicant as well as any successors and assigns who want to run that use of the property. So this has been circulated to Ms. Berber, who is here tonight with Mr. Hannah, and they have accepted the conditions. So the board, if you have any questions, you can answer it, but otherwise, it's ready for a motion.
All right, thanks very much. Does the board have any questions or comments on this application, on this decision? I had one question, just to clarify. Number seven, where it says there shall be no outdoor storage, but it should not prohibit the display of motorcycles while the dealership is open for business. Are you planning to have motorcycles on display during the day outside? And if so, do you roll them in at night?
Yes.
That's how it's going to work? Okay, but they won't be left out overnight?
Absolutely.
And I did talk to Ms. Berber about this because my concern was that, and I know there's more than enough parking there, but that they would put them in all the parking spaces. And they said they would really just keep them closer to the building. I don't think you want them too far from the store. So she assured me that they would be closer to the building and would be brought in at night.
Okay, great.
I just have one question. When do you anticipate the grand opening?
Why can't you be there? Probably like December 1st, November 1st. Somewhere in that time. When our season slows down. It's not a good move in the middle of the season, but fall would be great. Of course, everybody's going to. Can't thank you guys enough.
Thank you so much. Okay, so is there a motion by someone on the board to approve the decision for conditional use application number one dash 2024 for Hannah Harley-Davidson?
I'll make that motion.
I will second that motion. Thanks very much. Is there any public comment on the motion?
Excited.
Yes. So are we. All right, thanks very much. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you very much.
Just like to thank you guys for the entire management.
Absolutely. It's a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to item number eight, which is the hearing for conditional use application number two dash 2024 for 729 East Union Street, located in the multipurpose zoning district, proposing the addition of used car sales to the existing mechanic shop at this location pursuant to section 84-96-F1 of the West Coast and Township zoning ordinance. So I don't know if, I'll start with.
Sure. Thank you very much. So this is a conditional use application that was filed by Thomas Nielsen, principal of NIH US Properties LLC. Applicant sees conditional use approval under section 84-96-F1 of the West Coast and Township zoning ordinance to use a portion of the existing building at 729 East Union Street, which is tax parcel 52-5F-94 for the sale of used cars. The board exhibits are as follows. The first one is the conditional use application. It was received by the township on February 2nd, 2024. That's board exhibit one. The second is just an aerial tax map of the property. I'd like the board to see where this property is located and what the surrounding uses are. The third is a proof of publication. Tonight's hearing was advertised in the daily local news on March 4th and March 11th, 2024. The fourth exhibit is an affidavit of mailing from Township Zoning Officer Shelby Smith, dated February 26, 2024. So she sent notice of tonight's hearing to everybody, property owners within 500 feet of the property. Board exhibit five is an affidavit of posting. Shelby Smith posted the property on February 29th, 2024, and she showed a photograph of the posting. And the last one is the minutes from your planning commission, draft minutes of March 12th. Planning commission reviewed this application. And let's see. It was nine to zero to, let me make sure I got the right order. Hold on, hold on. I think it was a unanimous consent to go ahead and approve. Yes. I do. So those are the board exhibits. Is there anybody in the audience that owns or leases property in close proximity that wishes to be recognized as a party? Okay, nobody? We will turn over to applicants' counsel.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert DeLuca, and I am here on behalf of DRBN Inc., as well as having the owner here of the property, Mr. Warner. We're requesting a conditional use application. The property is currently used as a mechanic shop. And what they are asking for is to be able to sell used vehicles out of that property as well. If you look at what's up here, currently, this is all being used as a mechanic shop. And what they wish to do is they want to use this portion of the property for a mechanic shop, and they want to use this portion, as we sit here, as a place to sell used vehicles. When they fix vehicles that they may have, they will place them for sale. If you look at another diagram that was submitted, B will be for the mechanic shop, and A here will be for the sale of the vehicles. This section of A will be a mixed use of either, if they have an overflow of mechanic vehicles that they're fixing, as well as vehicles. The contention of the owners, as well as the lessors, is that there are a number of other mechanic shops in this area. There is one right next door, excuse me, used car lots in this area. There's one right next door. There's two on Ballmar Street. And this in no way will change the complexity of the neighborhood or change the neighborhood in any way. There are already vehicles being fixed there. There's not going to be bodywork done there. There're not going to be motorcycles there. It'll be limited to motor vehicles that they will be selling on that lot. This is the entire lot owned by Mr. Warner at this site. He does have residential apartments. It's a mixed-use area. He does have apartments there next door. And the area in question will be where he is leasing to the mechanic shop currently. My clients agree to obviously comply with any zoning regulations and any conditions placed on this property. We don't expect that much increase in traffic other than what's already there by people using the mechanic shop. You will have people coming in. As I previously indicated, this area is going to be for service repair. This area, right now, there's going to be no car lift. There's currently a lift in. This will be an area for detailing, cleaning up things. And then the area of the parking lot, as I previously described, down here, will be for the vehicles as set forth in A. B will be for the mechanic shop. And if they need additional area, they would use some of the other area in A. There's no issue to the neighbors where there's going to be any additional noise or traffic coming in there other than what is currently being set forth as the mechanic shop.
Mr. DeLuca, do you want to just give us the name of your client and have him swear in and affirm that everything that you just summarized would be his testimony?
I do.
Okay.
Right hand. Swear of testimony about the fact will be the truth, full truth, nothing but the truth. So help me God, I'm sitting with.
I do.
What's your full name?
Thomas Joseph Warner.
Mr. Warner, are you the owner of this property? And are you also here on behalf of DRBN Inc. this evening? The information that I have given to the board here tonight, is that true and correct?
Yes.
Are you requesting that you be able to sell automobiles from that site as well?
Yes.
And you will follow any zoning ordinances as well?
Yes.
Can you just be, I'm sorry, I'm confused because I understand you're the owner, and then you had Thomas Nielsen, DRBN Inc., as an applicant. So what is your relationship with that entity?
I'm the, they're a tenant line.
Okay, they're the tenant.
Yes. Sorry.
That's okay.
You've had this property for how long?
Four, five years.
And I've described to the board the property now next door. Is that being leased to as apartment?
Yes.
How many individuals are in that establishment? And is this a commercial neighborhood?
Yes.
Are there any other car sales in this area?
Yes.
And can you tell the panel briefly?
202, 204, 206 West Town Road, as we stated, as well as Dayer on the corner and Pro Trucks directly on our street.
As well, is there others on Ballmar around the corner as well?
Yes, that's Dayer on the corner. Yes.
Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
I have one. Here. Is there going to be any underground or boat ground storage tanks associated with this facility? Do you have them already now at your mechanic shop? Underground storage tanks and a boat ground storage tanks? Okay. Do you have any at the mechanic shop now? Now? Where does the waste go and the oil and from the shop?
I wonder, as a clerk, I guess there's oil tanks inside, I will, as a clerk, I guess there's oil tanks inside, to be honest, I have to ask my tenant.
Okay, so you do have tanks.
It's my understanding oil was in the fifty-five gallon drum.
That's nice.
There's no underground tanks because I had to do a phase one, that's why I know nothing's been installed properly. So for our, if we did a phase one, we faced a little property. There was no contamination. So anything, it might be a drum, but there's no tanks installed.
Okay, so you think it's a drum, okay. And hazardous waste, is there any that's stored or will be stored?
Nothing will be stored outside. There's anything to be stored, I guess it would be fifty-five gallon drums inside.
Okay, and then how would they, how would they treat that drum? What would they do with it?
Well, be, so be any waste, well, I also, a landscaper out of West Coast, K. John, and I think we have these be any waste load companies in just above ground, fifty-five gallon drum or two hundred gallon drums. We'll do a lot of be any waste load, imagine we would say.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about the parking. If the business is successful with car sales, would you, is there a potential that you would capitalize the parking associated with the residences and start parking vehicles there for sale?
The only thing that they park there now is they keep a line going up the one side. They've done that since they came in because I have the tenants park. That's all tenants' cars.
Those four or five we see there. What about this side closer to the shop? Is that going to become, could that potentially be, you know, right there? Is that potentially going to be?
So I know that they kept a line of cars there. As you can see, I think there's some there. They've never gone, never been able to go any further due to the fact that it's the tenant.
So it already exists and they've used that spot?
Yes, yes, just that line because my tenants were very adamant about not being blocked in. Because there's, there's an apartment as well as a house.
So I think, Sean, one of the things we can do, I mean, one of the exhibits that they were referring to on the screen, it's actually part of B one, is a, I don't know what you call it, a sketch, I guess, of the building, and it's labeled A and B, and it says, car sales will be utilizing A sections of parking lot for storage display of cars. So I mean, I think if the board, you know, it's not to scale, it's not of engineered plan, but at least it shows your representation where they intend to limit where the area would be able to sell cars. So if they go beyond that, that's.
I'm actually okay with it because it's not going to impinge on the tenants' ability to use the residents who are living in that building. If they're already using it for putting a vehicle, like, so, you know, after it's been finished with maintenance, whatever else, they don't really have a problem. This is one lot. What I didn't want to do is kind of force a condition that now they want to remove green space and put in more parking because of the inventory of vehicles.
I won't allow that. Yeah, obviously, you know what I'm saying, I wouldn't even let my tenant bring that up because I don't want to change the demographic of that. It's a beautiful house, beautiful corner, so I just put an A out there.
That is on the record now.
Yeah, it would also affect impermeas run off in other regions, I'm sure.
So there's no improvement to the property proposed, it's simply a change of use of the internal building?
That's it.
Okay.
But just so I'm clear, so you are the owner.
Yes.
This Thomas Nielsen, DRBN, is the applicant, is the, is the, who's leasing it from you right now?
Yes, my current tenant.
And then you also own this apartment, or the apartment?
The house, yes.
And is this all one parcel?
All one parcel.
Okay, but you're limiting the sales to what's outlined here in the A parking area?
Yes. And the only, like I said, they do have, they do use the one side, but I, that's, I'm just putting that out there. They have to leave those couple of cars there, but the whole other side is all tenants, yes.
Okay. And my other question is, is the lot B where you plan to have exclusively for the mechanic shop, does that meet our parking requirements for a mechanic shop?
It don't, Shelby, if you, if you would.
Because I don't know how many spaces are required for a mechanic shop per our code.
It would most likely be an, if it does, it's most likely an existing non-conforming, depending on when it was constructed.
Why would that be? Why would that be?
Just depends, it would depend on when it was constructed, and if it preaches the requirements of the zoning ordinance, that would give it the non-conforming status.
I mean, I think that's something that Shelby's going to have to, have to look at from a, even if you grant conditional use approval, she still has to issue a zoning requirement. And as I said, they're going to comply with all the ordinance requirements. So I think that detail can be dealt with as Shelby has the opportunity to look at the plan and look at the number of parking places.
Okay.
And that can be something that you would condition it on, that, you know, that the use applies with any of the whole parking permits.
Just one comment on the operation. It looks like you're storing used tires on that green strip there. So this past weekend, we just did a stream cleanup, and there were a lot of dumped tires in the creek that were a problem. So I don't know if that's a good practice, just something perhaps your tenant could improve on.
I will trust that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
There's no other comments from the board?
Open up if anyone, I'm just opening up for public comment. Does anybody wish to make a public comment on this application in this hearing?
Okay, hearing none?
I normally tell the board that taken under advisement, you have forty-five days, that this one was pretty straightforward. So if anybody wanted to make a motion, I think you could, and we could memorialize that in writing in a letter tomorrow. Again, the only thing I heard was making sure that it applies with any applicable ordinance requirements. And if you want to add Johnson, that they will have a conversation about trying to move house, you know, tires that are stored outside, inside.
Or if not inside, just on the, on the, if so, if it's contained and not just sprawling on like the shelves.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we'll get at that in please.
Okay, so then is the board amenable to approving this tonight?
Yes.
Yes, does somebody want to make a motion then to approve conditional use application number one dash two thousand and twenty-four? Is that the correct one?
Two dash two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll store that in the motion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Warner.
With the conditions that I outlined?
With the conditions. Did you want to add parking today?
I just said comply with all applicable zoning requirements, including parking.
Madam, Madam Chair, the, I just opened the zoning ordinance requirements. So for a service station or automotive repair shop, the requirements are two parking spaces per garage bay. How many bases do you have? Six.
They're not going to be, they're not going to be using all of those for repairs anymore.
Yeah, I think that's something you'll have a conversation with Shelby about to approve all that, yeah.
I believe the sales would fall under the requirements for the retail sales of non-perishable goods, if I'm remembering the discussion from the handout's application correctly, which were five per one thousand square feet of gross floor area.
Okay, thank you. Shelby, you will follow up with them on those requirements. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Again, any public comment on the motion? Okay, hearing none. Then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes and conditional use is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you need an extension.
To write the letter.
Yeah, if one is great, then.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. That was a lot easier than the last three months.
Yes, thank you.
And if you were here last night, that was longer.
It was the.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Good night.
Good night. Thanks very much. Moving on to item number nine, which is the discussion and approval, and possible approval of a stormwater pipe agreement between West Ocean Township and the owner of twelve oh seven Mallard Road. Mr. Bayshore, did you want to introduce this background information?
Ah, yes, Madam Chair. Before the board this evening is a proposed stormwater pipe agreement between the township and the owner of twelve oh seven Mallard Road. By way of background information, this property was a component of the Raven Lane Storm Sewer Project that was completed in two thousand and twenty-one. And during the prop, during that project, the property owner executed a settlement agreement with the township for the installation of a portion of the pipe on the property. Prior to the new pipe being installed, a patio drain was connected to the previous storm sewer pipe. And when the new pipe was installed, that patio drain was never reconnected, which resulted in significant flooding on the property, including in the interior of the residence, from what I understand. The easement board would allow the patio drain to be reconnected to the new pipe, which was the existing condition prior to the Raven Lane project. And once reconnected, the township will have no maintenance responsibility for the patio drain, and this would just simply allow the connection to be completed. And the property owner has approved the agreement, and it will be recorded against the property awarding line.
Okay, thanks very much. So I, at least for me, I think the most important part of this agreement is that the township's going in to restore the connection that was there before the township completed their work. We had to disconnect it, now we're going to go back in and connect it. And that the owner is going to maintain the connection from here forth from after.
Correct. They will be charged with ensuring, the township will still maintain, under our easement, the large storm sewer pipe that was installed at the Ravens Lane project, as we always have. But the patio drain connection is this property owner's responsibility, and we made that very clear to them.
Okay. Does the board have any questions or comments?
So basically, what we do, we're just going to memorialize that.
Correct. And then it would be, I mean, speaking with Ms. Camp, it would be recorded against the property, so no future property owner has any sort of, any belief that it would be responsible for it.
I just had one we, one we agreed itself in signing with West Ocean Township. Should there be a title there, so she should be the person signing, one for the, for West Ocean Township? We have an owner.
Yeah, we can type in whoever. I, I wasn't sure the timing wise, Chris was going to sign and then you were going to ratify it. So whoever signs it, I can type in underneath their title.
Yeah, just.
And then it'll also be an acknowledgement before it's reported.
Great, thank you.
Just one clear is that it was disconnected, but it wasn't removed, this patio drain, right? It was just simply cut and capped?
Um, it wasn't capped, it was, it wasn't capped, it was kind of put on an ankle into a.
A ninety and into a clean stove that ran alongside the new large pipe. It got choked out. I think it worked for a while, then it stopped.
I believe that his pipe was crushed, was it not?
I think it was crushed too. I think when the old pipe was dug up, his pipe came up with it. And it was crushed, it grew back, pushed it to the fagot, but he realized that that ninety was quick, so drain.
Do we know if the line's compromised anywhere else along its length from the patio?
We ran a camera after.
Okay, good, thanks.
Yes, I just want to say Mark and his team did a lot of due diligence to ensure that it'll get connected and be as clean as possible.
And then we ran a camera after we installed it, ran guardrails through it, to make sure it was properly.
Very good. Any other questions from the board? None? Okay, is there a motion to approve the stormwater pipe agreement with twelve oh seven Mallard Road?
I will put that motion.
I will second that motion.
All right, thanks very much. Is there any public comment on the motion? Okay, hearing none, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thanks very much, Mark and Chris and everybody involved in that.
Thanks for taking care of that.
Yeah. Okay, moving on to item number ten, which is the possible approval for Roseanne McGrath to serve as HR consultant for West Ocean Township. Mr. Bayshore, did you want to introduce this?
Hi, yes, Madam Chair. So before the board this evening is a proposal from Roseanne McGrath to serve as a human resources consultant for the township. This proposal would not replace our current human resources director for in-house administration, where the township's appointed labor council, but is intended to supplement those individuals. Ms. McGrath brings with her about over twenty years of municipal experience and has served many area municipalities. And our intention in working with her is to assist in any modification to township's policies, evaluation of our existing salary structure, performance management system, conducting employee training when necessary, and any other matters that may not necessitate any kind of legal review.
Okay, thank you very much. Just to give this a little bit of context too. So we met with Roseanne a few weeks ago, and she has a wealth of experience in this area. This board has had many discussions about the importance of human resources management, especially in an organization of our size. I think that there's a lot that she will be able to offer us as far as training employees, training for ourselves. I know I'll be probably taking advantage of some of the things, so I think this is going to be good for the township and for our employees moving forward. Is there any other comments or questions from the board? No.
I just have one question, or a couple of questions, I guess. She has a rather impressive resume, for sure. Which is what, was there any contact made with Lower Marion Township, just for some recommendation from that?
I have not, but she's worked with numerous municipalities, and I've, I've known her for about a decade.
Oh, have you?
She just helped out with Uglan. She does a lot of recruitment. She took a puppy, Susan Pup, to Pupper at Uglan. And I know the manager there, who is a resident of Count, used to be the assistant manager of Count. When Count was looking for somebody, he highly recommended her, and then Count used her for their search for new managers. She conducted that, and they were very pleased with her in that process.
And I used her, Malbrah Burrow utilized her when I lived there to do their search as well.
And my next question would be, how often do you think your services would be required? Any idea? Available for consultation or dealer?
Pretty much. I can't really opine on how much time it would be, just because until I sit down with her and, or Neil Jen and I sit down and talk to her about it, kind of like what our goals really are, I can't really give an idea on how much time it would take.
Okay, is there, I will get to you, sir, I promise. Is there a motion then to approve Roseanne McGrath to serve as an HR consultant for West Ocean Township?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, May. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks very much, Tina. Time for public comment. Yes, sir.
What's the, what's the cost for that?
How much does it cost?
One twenty-five dollar.
Her hourly rate is a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, and she will be consulted on an as-needed basis.
Okay, so what are you projecting as?
The total cost?
Now, that you made.
For the year?
To split.
I think we're going to have to have a conversation about what we're going to budgeting in the future, especially depending on how much we utilize her this year, which is probably going to be a lot of startup meetings with her. I know that during our initial discussion with her, we talked about coming up with a plan of, you know, how to roll out these various trainings or work that we might need to do on our employee personnel policy manual. And so I think once we have a plan in place of the way we'd like to go, it'll give us a better idea maybe of the cost at the end of the year and then here forward. I think a lot of it's going to be just getting started.
So it's open to me right now?
The total cost is unknown.
And what is your HR department's cost?
We do not have an HR department.
Our, our assistant, our assistant finance director serves as our HR director. She's a salaried employee within the finance department. Your name, sir?
It may be.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Yes, Dr. White?
How common is this done through in, in municipal area? And would it be possible or more economical to have this person be in-house as a?
It's actually pretty common and becoming even more common.
I think with larger organizations, definitely common.
And as opposed to having a consultant, as opposed to having a person on the staff?
I mean, we have somebody in-house, but handles, to handle day-to-day stuff, this is more of like a consulting service on an as-needed basis.
Yes, is this for all one hundred employees or just non-uniformed?
Probably anything that arises that we might need the service for.
Yes, I think it's going to be for all employees, yes. Okay. All right, so then we will vote on the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And Chris, you'll reach out to Roseanne?
Absolutely.
And follow up with her?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, moving on to item number eleven, which is the discussion regarding a proposed Stroud Water Research Center landowner agreement proposing a buffer planting project in Barker Park. Mr. Bayshore?
Madam Chair, before the board this evening is a proposed landowner agreement between West Ocean Township and Stroud Water Research Center for Stream Bank Buffer Planting Project in Barker Park. Stroud Water Research Center is proposing to install one hundred and ninety-four plantings in Barker Park, and Brian has brought the areas that would be planted as part of this project. They are doing this under a grant that the organization received from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, so there will be no cost to the township. The SAC has reviewed and recommended approving the agreement. I did have Mr. Kolkowski and Ms. Camp review the agreement, and Ms. Camp recommended some language to be included, which is in the memo that's before the board. And it's my, and there is an updated agreement, and it's my understanding that that has been incorporated into what is before the board this evening. Mr. Kolkowski also noted the timing that would potentially conflict with the West Townway Stream Bank Restoration Project, which is the next item on the agenda for discussion by the board. Mr. Kolkowski did have contact with Susan Charks from the SAC, and I believe the timing has been worked out. Correct, Brian?
Yes, the timing has been adjusted in the agreement, and I believe there's also flexibility if we have to adjust further.
Yes. So we believe that if the board wishes to consider this agreement, it is in a position that can be approved by the board. There was one question outstanding from the solicitor related to insurance and ensuring that the board is, that the township is named as an additional insurer. But I think that can be worked out after any agreement is approved. And then this was reviewed, to my understanding, this was reviewed by the Park and Recreation Board, as well as our Parks Department, who are fine with the proposal.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board on this agreement?
Yes, I'm a little confused as to the sequence of the timing here. So is this forested buffer restoration going to follow a stream bank restoration project? Or is it going to precede it? And if it precedes it, is it possible that when the design is done, for the stream bank restoration, that some of the work is going to have to be undone?
That was the, that was the issue we were looking to address.
That's why the agreement was revised to push this project back to, the stream bank will go first, the buffer will go second.
When Brian and I discussed this, we didn't want them putting in all of these plantings, and then we would have to rip some of them out for the stream bank project. So Susan spoke with Shroud, and I believe they pushed it back to the fall twenty twenty-four, or sometime in twenty twenty-five.
Spring of twenty twenty-five.
That's a big part D here to change then. Appendix A still has timeline for installation, site prep summer twenty-four and installation fall twenty-four, so you can.
This, this, this changed though. Chris had to hand out the board.
That was a change.
Yeah.
Where is, where does it say that?
It is page three.
Under appendix A.
So Brian, you think that the Stream Bank Restoration Project, if it is approved tonight, could the design work and all the work associated in the field would be done this year?
That is the point.
Okay, if that were to slip for whatever reason, we'd see flexibility in this.
Then we would contact Shroud to revise the timeline.
Okay, bye.
What other changes were made in this agreement? Was number two, like the language there changed under part D, just to kind of clean up the indication?
Language, I read that a couple of times, didn't really understand it.
Yeah, so it would be a change, yeah.
So she agreed to change where I think is more understandable.
Okay.
What, what kind of trees we talking about here? I mean, how higher could we possibly go to? I mean, I did not find anything in this agreement that specified what kind of tree we talking about.
I don't know what kind of trees are going to be planted.
Are we talking trees, shrubs? What are we talking about?
I don't have the answer to that question.
Because the plannings are three by three by inch, hanging a secret.
The plannings are, how big is that again?
It doesn't say what, what they are.
Yeah. And I had a question, is West.
And I had a question, is West Ocean Township okay with mowing the buffer at least twice a year for the first three years after planting and avoid blowing cut grass up against the shelters, which attracts rodents? Stroud Center of Russian may reduce this frequency if such mowing is not deemed necessary. Are we okay with that, yes?
I think so.
When I spoke to Tori, she didn't have any objections in the plane. I spoke to her this afternoon.
Okay.
Well, can it be some coordination and discussion between, remember does the stream restoration project and Stroud about what kind of vegetation we're talking about planting here? Where are they gonna plant it and what effect it might have on the restoration project?
Well, the stream buffer would be a separate project that we can get some credit for, for, for our MS four, additionally on top of it. The stream restoration is the stream banks, just within the stream banks. This is outside of the stream bank along park. So it's hard to see on this picture, there's a stream that basically runs right along the property line. Basically, the yellow line is almost a stream and that's where we're gonna be working for the stream bank restoration project. The area outside of that, which is non-wetlands, is where they will be planted. There is pockets of wetlands along the stream. There's a pocket here, there's a pocket, there's a large pocket here, another pocket here, another pocket at the north end. So they're gonna be planting outside of that, which is the area that's currently grass. They're not planting in the area that we're gonna be working in, but we'd have to go through their plantings to get to the stream bank to work with it. That's why I asked the way to planting.
But you can tell it is whatever Stroud's proposing, it will not have any impact upon restoration.
No. Two separate projects.
Okay, I understand it was separate projects, but it only impacts the other.
They will not impact the stream bank.
Okay, all right, let's hope get that.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, is there a, excuse me, sorry, is there a motion to approve the proposal from Stroud Water Research Center proposing a buffer planting project in Barker Park? I will make that motion. Is there a second?
I will start that motion.
All right, thanks very much. Is there any public comment, Ms. Shore?
Is it possible to reach out to D E P and see if we could get credit for this?
Oh, we can get credit for it, we must work.
I'm not convinced that the stream bank restorations reduce pollution.
The, I was gonna speak to that in the next item on the agenda.
So I'm just wondering if we could switch them out? I'm looking at this using funding, Stroud Research Center is using funding from ARPA funds, B C N R's to ARPA, so naturally using ARPA funds. If we could just swap out the projects and get credit for this.
But this is just tree plantings, this is one-hundred-and-ninety-four tree plantings of small seedlings, it's not an expensive project. The scale of the stream bank restoration is much more substantial, earth moving project.
I think we might be able to get credit for both. Is that a fair statement, Brian?
Yes, we can get, we can get credit for the buffer restoration. I was gonna speak to the buffer restoration credit in the next agenda. If we can do it now.
So wait, we can get credit, I'm sorry, we can get credit for the stream bank restoration and we can get credit for these plantings from Stroud?
Yes.
Correct, okay, and then we, and Brian will elaborate on the stream bank restoration then.
My point is, Sean mentioned something about the price, well, it's a little, it's a little project or just planting trees, it's not very expensive, but I think we could try and find projects that aren't a million dollars and we should be looking for just planting some trees that we get credit for that only costs four, we have volunteers planting for us, so this is.
Well, we could ask Brian what credit we would get for the tree plantings versus the stream bank restoration in terms of the ratio of, you know, improvements that it provides. We'll find out in a minute.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Gold.
Okay, so, excuse me, environmental deer and the upkeep of the trees once they're matured. So in the buffer area towards you, it talks about clearing out the brush. Well, there's five deer in there that use that as cover. Do we care about that?
Yes.
Okay, so we just visited them yesterday, so they are there and there used to be a lot of deer in the stream side, pretty big sized ones, but I haven't seen them there in quite some time. The trees that they're gonna plant, I'm very, very curious what the trees they're gonna plant because here it describes it as moderately wet. Well, it's a swamp, can't walk even close to the area back there. Maybe in the middle of the summer it dries out enough, but I don't know what trees survive that kind of wet. You can't walk in there. And if you look at, what's the creek next to West Town School, those trees have dropped significantly under the wet conditions we had recently, so has Cooper Smith Park. Not the south side of Cooper Smith Park, which I was looking at last year, but the north side of Cooper Smith Park dropped a lot of trees under these wet conditions, so much so that I'm asking the board to go, asking the ring to go take a look at that. It's, it's a lot worse than it was last year. There's a lot of trees that have to be cleared out. So I think that ought to be taken into consideration. One is exactly what kind of trees do they think can survive in a swamp? And would they reconsider clearing out that brush on the other side because that is a hazard for deer?
So I really appreciate your comment and I agree with you. I think, and again, I don't know all the details about the kind of work that Stroud has already done or is planning to do as far as selection of, you know, what kind of trees they intend on planting, but I know that members of our sustainability committee are involved in that conversation and will be involved in that conversation. And I will personally make it a priority to ensure that whatever they do plant is going to fare well in those wet conditions because I agree with you.
Yeah, thank you for that. I mean, it's just that it shouldn't be characterized as moderately wet. It should be characterized as actually wetlands or swamps.
I don't know if Stroud has done a site visit to this area yet. Again, I know they're using these funds and that they have several projects with various townships that they're planning on doing these sorts of projects. I don't know if they've been on site, but I'm sure in this plan, they have a plan to come out and look and evaluate and there will be conversations about what kinds of plantings to put in.
Just to follow up, it certainly would be worth while they have the kind of trees that we're talking about. And the other point that you brought up, Charlie, which is a good one about the deer, I mean, are they gonna provide some kind of deer protection around these trees because the deer are gonna care a lot, they're gonna eat a lot.
Yeah, but we're having issues like that with our hamlet crest plantings that we did and it certainly is an issue and I know that deer make their homes in this area of the park too. And so it's something that I'm glad you brought it up and we will look into for sure.
We did have those deer covers that we put in, the little plantings that we did.
There's only really so much that you can do.
Yeah.
So you have a big experiment going on in Cooper Smith Park because there's at least fifteen deer there regularly and they just did a bunch of plantings in Cooper Smith Park. So that could tell you what to expect.
And we did one-hundred-and-fifty at Hamilton Hill two last year, park, so.
And again, this is Stroud Water Research Center's project, so I'm sure that they're gonna take whatever precautions that they are gonna take and, but as far as selection of species, we will have a conversation with them and I'll make sure that we find out what they're planning to put there.
Can I just, one more question? I'm curious what the creek that project is.
The question. We're going to move on to that in the next item. We're moving into that. Absolutely, okay.
So just something, the motion is just to approve the agreement between ourselves and the Stroud Waters Research Center. I agree with the planting is right in the house.
Right. Okay. All in favor then of this agreement? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so moving on to item number twelve, thank you. The discussion regarding proposals from Carol Engineering Corporation and H R G Incorporated for work associated with proposed projects outlined in the township's pollution reduction plan. I'm gonna hand this over to our engineer, Brian.
Thank you. So a little bit of background on the township and the MS four program. The township is currently under an MS four permit that will expire in August of this year. One of my announcements later was our MS four permit rule, which was due on, which was due March fifth, was submitted on March fifth, so it was transmitted to D E P, so our application for renewal has been submitted. H R G was the select to consult to prepare the, our T M D L slash P R P plan. It was revised in the end of twenty-twenty-two and we submitted for the amendment in January twenty-twenty-three, approved. The amendment was accepted and approved by D E P, I believe it was May of twenty-twenty-three. In that, in our T M D L, the township is required to reduce our total suspended solids or our sediment load into our waterways by three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-four pounds per year. That is our mandated reduction by the state. In our P R P, we have a list, a table that's listed several potential projects that were chosen over the years in the initial pollution reduction plan. They were vetted by the D E P and they were approved. In that plan, we have the sewage treatment planning buffer. That buffer is about a half an acre in the area and we got credit for three-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-six pounds of reduction. I did the math, this two-point-one-four acres is going to be about, so the one-point-four-five they're proposing right there is about three times that, so you're looking at approximately eight to ten thousand pounds of sediment reduction. In the plan of sediment sediment reduction, the government services center basin, which is currently under design, that plan is fifteen-thousand-seven-hundred pounds of reduction just for that basin. So you can see there's a big difference between structural projects and buffers. The, where those reductions come from is D E P has a published document where they list all their accepted B M Ps and in there they list their reductions. And if you look at a stream restoration project, the reduction for stream restoration is given in pounds per foot per year, so the longer the stream, the long, the more reduction you get. Sediment is forty-four-point-eight pounds per linear foot per year. So the longer the stream, you can restore the banks, the more sediment they call, that's one of the biggest projects. Forested buffers have to be thirty-five feet wide, have so much drainage to them and they have a value that they place on that for a calculation. A tree, you have to plant a hundred, the minimum result is a hundred trees for a tree planting, but the reduction for sediment is only twenty percent reduction where it's a forested buffer will give you fifty percent reduction based on the calculation. So with that being said, the Hagerty Rainstream Restoration as proposed in the P R P is proposed for one-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty pounds of sediment reduction. It's a big number. The West Town Way Search Stream Restoration is currently proposed at fifty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty pounds of sediment reduction for that stream restoration. Now, there is, I want to point out to you for the West Town Way, the proposal in the P R P plan is what's before you right now, this is the prop, actually, it's by the other way. This is what was submitted to D E P in the P R P and in that plan, the reduction was proposed to be, this is the treatment plant, was proposed to be below the treatment plant. For a field visit, the treatment plant, the layout of the plant, let me get to it here. Touch up. The way this stream curves through here, we cannot use this, it's too, the bank is already, the bank, the deck is already armored and then this piece here is already in, is already a wetland, so we cannot use that piece. So what I proposed after walking the site and I presented the R F P to our consultants was, give me a second, when we walked the project, the stream runs all the way through our park and also the township owns this little, this little piece of property back here, gives us a much, much, much longer potential of a stream restoration. So until we actually have the survey and the design, is, the fifty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet, fifty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty pounds of reduction is based on a four-hundred-and-fifty-foot long stream restoration. We may be able to get more length. If we get more length, we get more pounds. So that's the idea, that's why we walked it and looked at it and there is some pockets of wetlands which we cannot use because we can't disturb the wetlands, so the stream will be restored in a pocket between them. So until we actually have it surveyed and know what the actual full length will be, we may be able to get more than the fifty-one-thousand. We're sure we can get four-hundred-and-fifty square feet, we think we can possibly get more because of how there's different pockets up through here.
How much more would you like?
I'm hoping to get closer to six-hundred, four-fifty, so we bring it closer to seventy-thousand-pounds.
So you're looking like a feasibility study needs to be done?
There was part of the zone, either way, this was in our P R P to be in, on this branch of the creek, it just, the P R P plan showed it down further, which is an area that's currently wet.
Wait, I'm sorry, is this the West Town Way Stream Restoration? Yes, okay.
Yes. So this is West Town Way, this is on our property, it's in the park, there's no private property involved.
No, it hasn't.
No, it's been settled.
Right now, that's not, what you're saying is not part of the plan.
Right. The initial plan was to restore it right in this area right here, around the, around the back of the home station, which when we went out to look at it, it's wetlands, it's already currently forested. There was a planting, an S A C project years ago to plant trees up there. It would be the feet, either way, would it, would either consultant has to survey it and identify wetlands. Once they survey, identify the wetlands, then we, then we'll know the length we can do. So it's, either proposal would be viable, same, there's not been a feasibility study for West Town Way. You don't need one for here because it's our property and there is areas of stream that, when I was pacing it off, I got to be about six-hundred feet in the field, but I'm not a weapon scientist, so I can't identify. I went by what I could see and what I understand are wetlands, but when the wetland scientists as part of the proposal flags it, then we'll know exactly what we have.
So are these proposals for the, the area that the length that you described here, are they the original?
Therefore, this is the map that I gave each, this is the map that I prepared.
So it is based on the extra?
It's based on this, not only the one that was in the P R P.
So it's based on the additional?
Yes, this is the map I sent to both H R G and Cal requesting the proposals you see before.
Okay.
So the proposals came, H R G was significantly more expensive than Carol in their proposal. The scope of services is very similar for this project. I don't have an issue with either proposal or either firm, it's just one firm was significantly more.
Was the scope of work equivalent, pretty much?
Yes.
So we budgeted a hundred-and-twenty thousand. Carol Engineering's proposing doing the work of West Town Way for ninety-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and H R G is proposing to do the work for a hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-eight-hundred dollars.
Yes.
So if the scope of work is the same, does the board have a preference of which engineering firm you want to contract with?
I say the lowest bidder because they're both good. Having worked with H R G for the past eight years now, Sewer Authority, I think they're very good, but having worked with Carol for the past two years on the township, I think they're very good too. So I'd go to the lowest bidder.
Okay, so Tina is, are you making a motion then?
Yeah, I am making a motion to go with Carol Engineering for the Hagerty, all of our.
The West Town Way.
This is West Town.
Oh, okay. I was gonna do both, but we can't do both.
Yeah.
For the West Town Way Stream Bank Restoration for Carol Engineering for ninety-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars.
Okay, is there a second?
No, second, just, just for West Town.
This is for West Town Way.
I just tried to combine them, but okay, I can't.
So I have a question for Brian. So this is a prize, an auto exceed prize based on an unknown length of restoration at this point in terms of the actual field work that would be needed, so.
I know that Carol Engineering did perform, they did go out there, walked the site and looked at it, because they called me, they called me to ask if they could go out there and look at it. and look at it. I said, I should go out there and walk the park.
So if, when they do the survey, there's either a significantly less length of stream bank that can be restored or significantly more that could be restored, is this price going to change or not for this phase of the work? I'm not talking about in the field construction, I'm talking about this design permitting bidding.
No, because I gave them, I asked them in the, if you look at, if you look at my map, I asked them with the, the RFP was for the area that was clouded in there, for that full length that are from property line to property line.
So I get that for the survey, you've got to survey the whole point, but the point to what Mr. Golden mentioned earlier, if there's a significant area of wetlands, which everyone says there is there, hence it being quite a small section that can be done, is $99,875 still the price?
My estimation for 125,000 was based on 450 linear feet of design. So.
I don't think that Carol Engineering would do us dirty.
So I estimated 125,000 for the 450-foot linear design that was in the PRP.
Are you, you trying to make sure that our views were exactly the same that they're bidding on?
Definitely. Look, you do a survey, let's say it's only 200 feet, so the design and the permitting is maybe a lot less. Now we've authorized an expansion, I know it's an auto exceed, but I'm like, with all these things, when you have an unknown, a better process is to say, this is what we're authorizing, do the survey, tell us what you find and then tell us the next.
Well, then can we make a motion then to approve this under the condition that if they were to go out and rewalk the site and say, in fact, we can only do 200 of feet of this, that we'll revisit the price and have those negotiations?
I'm okay to authorize this, as long as I'm checking with them with the survey results and a conversation with them here around what is the actual design work we have to do and is it consistent with the price you're proposing?
I know they're not here, but I actually have a lot of faith that they would be open to.
I have a question. If, under feasible, uh, scope of services, it says that as such we have included a Phase 1 Bog Turtle Survey conducted by a certified herbologist. And then under contract terms, it says that the following surfaces are not included, Bog Turtle Investigation, what are we talking about?
Probably a cut and paste, I got a mistake.
And it's, it's under both Hagerty and West Town Way.
For Carol Engineering.
For Carol Engineering. Now, yeah.
Who can read the fine line?
So any clarification on that?
They include this bog turtle language in many of their projects?
They're in all of their projects.
You can't do projects, right, Brian?
Yes, and you find, if there's a bog turtle, if there's a bog turtle, Carol Engineering is not certified by the state, there's only, the last time I did one, which was about eight years ago, there's only 12 people certified that was going to do a bog turtle investigation. There's only certain times of the year you can do it and it's, it can put the big time breaks in the project.
All right, so we can have Carol look at that language?
And then I had another question. It says that they don't, Carol doesn't anticipate that a hydraulic analysis will be required, but HRG did.
What number is that?
That is under design and implementation phase four in ICLIS.
Yeah, that does come up before competing proposals between the two. HRG always seems to want to include it, Carol has said, we don't believe it's necessary. One of the projects, it was, that we conceded with, it wasn't necessary.
Okay, just. Yeah, that's, that's, cut adult suspenders, when you do these stream banks, if you don't change the size of the stream, you don't need to do a head crack study, so.
Okay, so I will modify my motion to include the, include site survey first and then come back to drawing board and?
Well, that's, that's how it's worked with both the, so they're currently going through the survey and testing at the government services center basin, before they design, Chris and I need to go over what these town limits, so we, we're on the same page in scope before he designs it.
Okay.
So that's something we can use standard practice on the way.
Well, now we have it in the motion.
Yeah, and to look at that and part of the contract that Nate pointed out, just to be sure.
I will clarify that with Chris.
The two parts Nate pointed out, yes. Okay, so we have a motion, and was there a second?
Not yet.
Okay, thanks, Don. Is there any public comment on this, on West Town Way Stream Bank Restoration? Yes, sir, do you mind coming up to the microphone?
I wouldn't be that light, I'm pretty relaxed. I'm just curious of the difference in the two bids.
Yes.
That's a, that's a big difference when they're both bidding on the same thing, on, what was it, 100,000, 150,000? Just, is everything included in both bids the same?
That's, that's probably, you felt that they were equivalent in the scope of work.
I, I just, that's a lot of difference.
Yeah, that could be.
That's what the two.
Yeah.
All right.
It does not surprise me, sir, because even if you look at the asphalt paving bids, the range on those bids, I forget how many we had, so it's quite substantial for the same work, right? And this, I know this is professional services and it's kind of a lower number, but this is how companies bid.
Any other questions? Mr. Meyer.
Yeah, so when you go out, when you request a bid, are you giving them criteria, kind like, almost like an RFQ?
So I sent each of my contacts, I have a contact at HRG, a contact at Carol Engineering, I sent them the exact same email to request a proposal. I included the PRP plan, so they have the same basis even though one firm prepared it, the other firm has it, which outlines all the projects, it's a large document. And then I gave them this map you see in front of you here and said, and the BMP was listed in our scope as BMP 06 in all the documents, so I said BMP 06 was proposed at, as proposed in the PRP plan, we would like to get a proposal to replace BMP 6, because it's still in the same property, with what I, what I clouded here and read and gave proposal to do that design. And there's the two proposals I got back. So they got the same information, the same request, emailed the both within probably a minute or two of each other, because I typed this email, I addressed exactly the same, addressed them to the individuals and sent them one after the other.
So they're covered, they're both covered in the same requirements then?
Yes. And one firm believes the work's going to cost just under $100,000, and one firm believes the work's going to cost, for their firm to do it, $153,000. That's what they've, in their professional opinions, they've decided the work is what it would cost to do the work.
Thank you. Ms. Ford?
What budget or what fund is that coming out of?
It's budgeted in the capital reserve fund, I believe.
It is.
And that's, so this is just before any, any equipment or the job is done, this is just for planning?
This is design bidding and construction.
Design permitting, so DEP also has to approve the design of the project before we can build it, they give, they have to give us a permit to build it. So they're going to get the approval of the project from the construct, for construction, and then manage the construction for us as well.
Right, but this doesn't include the cost of doing it?
Correct.
So that's going to be another couple hundred thousand dollars.
That was one of their, one of the scope of services to provide a cost estimate.
Just going back to 2016, 2017, when I started learning about the storm waters, BMPs and MS4 permits and all that good stuff, I went to Norristown and I sat with one of their water resource officers for close to two and a half hours. And he went and got the file from West Ocean and looked at the plan that HRG did initially back in 2015 or 16. And he was rather disgusted, he's like, this is over here, this is not what we were looking for. We just wanted a basic plan. He's like, I, you know, wondering how much this report costs the tax payers. So, yeah, I, I questioned a lot of this work just because I was sitting there face to face in the DEP building, talking to somebody that reviews these comments and things. So that's one of the reasons why I have a lot of questions about this stuff. I just, I'm, I'm not convinced, as you all know, this is all based on modeling, we don't, it just is a waste of money in my opinion. And it's going to end up probably close to $2 million for these two projects. Is it something that we can send our staff to train to learn how to do a steam bank, stream bank restoration? I mean, it can't be.
I don't know the expertise that's required to do a stream bank restoration. I do think though, that it may be helpful to contact DEP and have them potentially send a representative here. I would, I would enjoy hearing from a DEP rep firsthand, to, you know, ask them these questions, have them explain to us exactly, you know, what their expectations are, and we could, you know, involve the public in those conversations. I think that's a good idea. I'm not doubting what you're saying, but.
Just the projects that I know that township's been doing, the, you know, the, the attempt at Sunset Hollow and some of the hard infrastructure seems to make a lot more sense to me than I'm going to call this soft infrastructure. So can't we be spending these millions of dollars partnering with PennDOT and figuring out the solutions and then we're watching the outcome? You know, it just seems like it would be money and time that are spent, et cetera and all. Aren't you locked into this now, because it's what your project requires? So I mean, that, that may be for a future conversation when you amend your permit, but now you're obligated by your permit to do these things.
Piping, piping, piping in a stormwater is not one of, not a BMP that gets us any credit for Dallas forum. This kind of projects is what gets you credit, and one of the biggest credits you get is stream restoration.
They're not.
So that's.
What are they going to do if we don't do it? None.
James' last words, aren't they? Yes, Mr. Gold.
I want to do it for $10,000. The biggest, for me, the indication when you get a wide bid, a wide bid, is they don't understand their starting point. And I live at the top of the park and it needs a lot of work. And I can understand how two engineering companies look at it and say, where are we even going to begin? And come away with a totally different opinion of what the project is. So I think it's worth not approving either of them, but going back to the start and trying to understand exactly what the mission is. And let me give you some examples. The Goshen Valley Detention Basin feeds your stream and the culvert pipes or whatever they are, total disrepair. Everything's broken, everything's cracked. The pumping station, which is the source of the sewer smell when it goes bad, I believe, feeds that stream as well. And there was a lot of repairs done in the last 10 years on those pumps, the whole pump system, to slow that down or stop that failure, and it's been pretty good, relatively good, hasn't smelled so bad to part of it. There's a lot of critters that live up there, deep holes in that stream, there is turtles. I don't know what kind of turtles, but there is turtles and they are seasonal. If you rewalk that area down, I don't want to say in a, in a walk down, a form of walk down, if you walk that down with maybe one more expert and say, what are we going to do about all this broken culvert? This is all coming from Goshen Valley. Is any of that part of Goshen Valley's cost? Is the pump station doing what it's supposed to because it's always wet there also? There's a lot of what I call widow maker trees that are along this wetlands that are ready to fall on my head. And Doreen should take another walk down from the very top on Eagle Road all the way down and tag some of those trees to be removed. And then the wetter it gets, the more those trees are susceptible to falling when we have the high winds, when we have rain and high winds. The more you walk down into the middle of the park, it's a mixed match of how the homeowners packed up their property into that creek area. Some of them are way into the park area, some of them are not. So it's best back there, it's a combination of falling trees, wetlands, low lying areas that, again, maybe one month out of the year is drying. So I can see how you can get very different approaches to how to handle that. You call it a stream, I just call it a drainage ditch for, for Goshen Valley. I think that's the only source of water there. So I, I know you walked it down, but did you see all these variables there that people were trying to differently?
It's a, it's a connected network. We realize that this isn't just its own thing, everything affects the next thing downstream, that's true. I think that by doing this project, though, we're at least tackling what we can in our township. But I don't disagree with you, I think we need to have, you know, a holistic approach to all of this, and it's a good point.
I think it needs a lot of work.
Thank you.
That would be my point, starting from all the broken pipes that are supposed to channel that water from Goshen Valley, start there, and all the critters and animals that are living there now, starting there, all the way down through how it meanders, and it shouldn't necessarily meander the way it does. I think it needs a lot of work, but I think you need to tighten up what the starting point is and what the basic objectives are with these engineering companies before you award one or the other. I think you're going to be disappointed either way.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
I have one more, actually.
Okay, very briefly.
Yeah, very quick Google search, stream bank restoration costs. Here's, I don't know how you say it, the city of New York, Riverwatch has been awarded a $197,000 grant from the Great Lakes Commission to stabilize 1,800 linear, linear feet. Total project costs $316,000.
Could be different variables, I don't know the facts of that specific project, I can't comment on that. Thank you very much.
So I just want to follow up on Mr. Golden's comment with, with Brian. So do you believe that the engineer really has a good feel for this in terms of, there's no need for a feasibility study relative to the Barker Park location and the ability to do a stream bank restoration project? I mean, it's been looked at many times, first with HRG years and years ago, began with this particular proposal, you had a look at it, yes, there are a lot of issues to work through, that's why we're paying some of the money for the professional engineering service, correct?
Correct. The feasibility study is, is a, whose term in this case is going to be PINDY, to make sure there's no bog turtles, wetlands, and a survey, to locate where the wetlands are. That's your feasibility, then we can figure out from there if there's enough space, if we get more than 450, if we get our 450, what we're going to get, and then at that point can you make a decision, yes, we're going to continue going forward or no, we cancel it.
So my original point, that's a reasonable approach, is to get those initial items done and then regroup around, is this a valid project or not? Or if, if it is, what kind of, what have we learned from doing that work that might shape it differently?
Correct. And once the survey is done, the PINDY is clear, survey is done, the wetlands are done, that's when I had the scoping meeting. I had one for basin route, I had one for government services basin, and then I will have another one with the consulting for this one as well.
All right. So we had a motion in a second.
Can you just remind what the motion is again?
The motion is to award Carol Engineering Corporation the amount of, not to exceed $99,875 for the West Town Way Stream Bank Restoration, sorry.
With a check in after the survey and initial studies have been done prior to proceeding with the design phase.
And to look at the language in the contract.
Concerning the box.
Concerning the market.
Yeah, we have a timeline here too, upon our work and staying up strats, we want to get the restoration work done and then have strats and everything.
Yeah, but when, there's nothing, I don't believe, that timeline drives wrong decisions and it's something we need to consider as we work through the process.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next, Hagerty Boulevard Stream Bank Restoration. Brian, did you want to summarize this?
So Hagerty Boulevard, as I said earlier, was a, is a stream bank restoration project that we had accounted for for 132,250 pounds of sediment reduction for a year in the PRP. They're looking at a stream restoration length of 1,000, 1,150 feet. Some of the, some of the issues with this, challenges with this project are, it's all in private property, so we don't have any property controls. And there is currently some very steeped bank nets and some vegetation that is already matured that we may not be able to disturb. So I did the same thing, this is the, this is the information that was sent, because this is what's in the PRP to both HRG and to Carol to request their proposals. HRG proposal is just to design it. They did not include anything really as much of a feasibility in their proposal, where Carol Engineering set their proposal up that they would do a feasibility, so I just think the project is going to be feasible or approvable by PennDOT, or sorry, DEP prior to. or sorry, DEP prior to running into all the design. So that's where they added work to their proposal. But they still came in less than the design proposal of HRG without the feasibility.
So then how much is the feasibility portion of Carol Engineering proposal?
So I have it here now. Carol Engineering's Hagerty, their feasibility study for theirs was supposed to be $31,750.
$31,750 for the feasibility study. So I don't know, you can have a discussion as a board, I don't know. At least for me, looking at Carol Engineering's report, it seems that there are a few concerns and challenges.
What do you think?
Yeah, and so I'm definitely not in a, in the mindset to approve the full 191,000 for the entire project.
So I'd like to suggest a different approach. So just as we found out as we got further into considering these, these projects prior to MS4 permit, that the based road initial idea was not a go. It was a non-start for various reasons. I'm getting the same feeling here around Hagerty Boulevard one, just because of the way fresh advice from Carol has looked at it and said, this has got a lot of challenges, we really don't want to proceed here until we do a feasibility study. I think we should ask Brian to go back and look at our overall list of projects that would give us credits for these priority pollutant reductions and see if really there's a better project that might displace this one at this time versus just plowing on with a feasibility study for the $31,000. I think we should maybe take a step back and have staff and Carol look at the rest of the projects that are outlined. They were originally HRG's idea and again, you know, I'm not 100% sure they've looked at it to the degree that I would feel comfortable with pushing on with this as a must do project.
Brian, do you know off the top of your head, and I don't expect you to necessarily, but do you know if any of the other project, any other projects that you might have in mind that would be, that would even approach the total pound reduction that we would get from the Hagerty Boulevard? Which you said was 132,000 pounds?
Yes, there's a stream bank, we have two other stream bank restorations proposed in the Team Geltman. One is Goose Creek, which I believe I have to look more into that they, where they proposed it, that they're proposing 103,000 pounds for that, if that stream bank can be done. And the other one is the West Town Road stream that runs around the Davis Services Center basin on that property. That one's 198,000 pounds. That's our, our single, that's our single largest project. It's also our single most expensive project, it's the longest stream. So that one, the, the, the plan as submitted and approved as a Team Geltman submitted in 2022, has the West Town Road, West Town Road being year five, which would be, which is after, in line, have we, we prioritize and we push that to the end of the list in 2022.
So then if, if.
So we have to just, we would just move it up the list, that's all.
Yeah, but is this part of our permit?
It's currently, yes.
So then are we allowed to just push it off?
We can move them around and, and change the order. But I, I changed the order, I changed it in the, in the report. Report that went in for, the report, report that went in for this year saying that two we were working on this year were Hagerty and West Town Way. Now we can change that because our report is, July 1st, June 30th is our reporting period. So we can, in our report, we can, I can say that we switched the projects.
And then we have to reapply for our permit was in August?
We already applied for it.
We already did.
The application was submitted in March then.
Okay. Sean, I don't disagree with you. Is, is there any other board comment?
Just got a curiosity, but what's the consequences that we don't meet the permit requirements?
I don't know.
Do they assign us a.
We can be audited by either the EPA or DEP because this is actually a permit that's under the EPA issue.
Sure there's fines and things like that are authorized under the Clean Streams Law and all that, but whether or not they've ever done that, I don't know. I'm not aware.
I'm not aware of anybody being audited and fined for this portion of their MS4.
We're not, we're not unique in struggling with understanding how best to move these projects forward a little bit. Almost all the townships who have MS4 permits have got the same issues and in my opinion, probably further behind relative to trying to reach their goals than we are. So a little bit of a delay and a regroup and look at these projects and decide which ones are more feasible and talk with our Carol Engineering who wasn't involved in the original assessment and get that perspective on what the time will spend.
Okay, so we're proposing then to not award the Hagerty Boulevard Stream Bank Restoration and instead explore some other projects that might be more feasible.
Yeah, regroup around the whole approach.
Yeah, that Goose Creek one is intriguing.
We don't need a motion for that, do we? Just move on, okay.
Is there any public comment on that?
Public comment?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. I think that was.
All right, moving on to item number 13, which is reports for the month of February 2024 by Police Chief Michael Carroll.
Thank you. Report from the Police Department for February 2024. We responded to 2,087 calls for service. Thirty-five of those are alarms and two of those alarms are counted invalid. Seventy-one accidents, 30 of which were reportable accidents, and we drove a total of 14,419 miles. We performed extra traffic enforcement on Westchester Pike, Gatling Pike, and Challenger Road, South Five Point Road, North Five Point Road, Montgomery Avenue, Lincoln Avenue, Sunset Hollow Road, and Route 100 bypass. In the career development area, we did our normal monthly Lexi Poll, PA virtual trainings, the emergency response team did a normal monthly training. And we added this year the Chris Boil Consulting Google updates. In addition to that, Officer Newton attended the FBI inter-county detective school. Officer Detective Bedworth attended NTOA SWAT command leadership school. Officer Graham started home and attended negotiator training. And Sergeant Gilbert and Sergeant Settle attended firearms training. Of the alarms I spoke of earlier, six of those were second alarms of the year and one was a third. We assisted other departments a total of 28 times for approximately 12 and a half hours of service. And we were assisted by other departments a total of 34 times. And in addition, we took delivery of the Ford Mach-E, the next electric vehicle in our fleet last Friday. So I anticipate a month or two to get it outfitted and be in service. That's the report from the Police Department.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for Chief Carroll?
I have a question. Last month was double what it is this month for total watch. Just wondering why is that?
I wish I had an answer for you. It depends on so many factors as far as how many people are working, what kind of calls are going on, are they trialing the trainings? There's, there's a numerous factor.
Chief, does the, the electric charge installed over in the building where the detective vehicles are parked, is that now installed?
So we, the new ones that were installed, there's one on the admin, police admin parking.
Yeah.
Between the buildings, there's one behind our department where the detectives park. And then there's the one that's installed.
They're all in the traffic watch, they're all functioning effectively.
Now the electric vehicle, the Mach-E, how is that going to be utilized?
It'll be assigned to the juvenile department.
And then also for patrol as well?
So we're going to use, we're going to take it from them when they're not driving and to test it out for patrol, yes.
So this would be a good pilot program really for whether or not this vehicle is compatible for use for patrol.
That's the plan.
Okay, yeah, good. One alarm that you mentioned, you have, it's the only one that was chargeable, but there's NV homes back again. I think they were listed four times as having alarms. There's asterisks next to the NV homes. Do you have any idea what the asterisks stand for?
I do. So they have, NV homes has multiple buildings with alarms. So the asterisks are just indicating.
Oh, I see, so they're set by different locations?
Yes.
So how, so how would that work then? So would, anyone, anyone specific location has to have alarms multiple times in order to be fined? So would that be just the company NVs would be that specific location?
Correct.
I noticed the alarms are considerably down this month compared to this month.
I'm sorry.
I said I noticed the alarms are considerably down this month compared to this one.
Probably because we jostled them a little bit last month. But in the area of alarms, we did, I worked with Preston for the last month or so to get the, I think there were five that we were able to file.
Yes, we're going to file civil complaints to try to block the back payments.
Okay, good.
Some of the properties unfortunately, it's like a tenant and when they submitted the application, they didn't list like an entity name. So there are a couple that we don't have an actual entity that we can sue as a defendant, but we'll work on that. So see how it goes.
How much are they in arrears? How much money are we talking?
It's not a ton of money actually, and that's why hopefully the, I think it's going to prove to be a learning experience with the defendants because in addition to not paying the fine, which is a, which is a penalty, which we can get another fine for. Like the one company didn't renew their permit, so that's a fine. So I, I think when they realize like, geez, we're paying a lot of money here for something that we should be able to fix, that's the goal, is to get them. It's not for you to collect the money and to change the behavior. So we're hoping that that works.
We are.
This past weekend, we did the TRC Creek cleanup and we found at least three locations where there's considerable amount of illegal dumping going on, unable to impound tires. One was behind the McDonald's there on Montgomery Avenue. Another one was behind the Kmart or the old Kmart. And another location was behind the vacated Greek restaurant there on Turner Lane. There's like almost 60 tires, if not more, were collected over the weekend. What can be done as far as trying to change that from happening?
Well, if we could catch what was doing, then I think we could change it. But that's obviously the typical.
Is there anything we could, from the township, they could do as far as maybe getting some tenants to install cameras or something like that?
Certainly cameras is the ultimate goal. A lot of these places that you're speaking of are private property. So hopefully we can convince the owners to take a little responsibility to do that.
Is there something we could say a little bit?
We could certainly notify the owners that they would be the ones who'd have to install the cameras. And then if they do catch somebody, then we can force a court.
Yeah, so from what you mentioned, that's the new target too. And we had talked in the back, they have cameras because we're not parking back here.
Well, Chris Robbins from a blanking on the name of the park, they owned that whole property, so it wouldn't be, yeah, Robbins and Company, so it wouldn't be the target that would install it. It would be the Robinson Company has the property.
Okay.
I would also suggest if we can put the cameras in the front of the shopping center. Because the only cameras we have now are the ones that the police have, which is by the light traffic light.
Well, that would, since it's private property, that would be at their discretion. We can't mandate them to do that.
You know, with Target coming in, they may have their own security. And that may be a positive thing. We could definitely have a conversation with them though.
That's what I'm thinking, talking today.
Is there any way on, on the properties where they're being dumped? Are they fenced or is there a way you can make it harder for people to get into dump?
Well, the, the property owners certainly could do that, but I don't know.
I mean, bringing to their attention may help. I mean, they don't want to, because I'm just sitting here thinking like, is it any code violation or can we make it a code violation? Again, I'm not trying to penalize people, maybe that it's probably people that don't own those properties that are doing the dumping. But if you, if you could somehow look into making it a violation or something, that that condition exists, and then the property owners are more motivated to try to stop the illegal behavior.
I don't think this condition exists.
And then putting cameras, then they'll. Yeah, then they'll want to put in cameras.
Just dumping a violation.
Well, no, I think the conditions that the rear of the Greek restaurant were in before the cleanup, I think that would have been a violation just trashing out the open, I think we had.
Probably have property maintenance.
Yeah, the property owners could dictate the garbage, garbage and rubbish portion of tire disposal.
You know, but putting that on the property owner, I mean, well, they're not monitoring their property enough to see that people aren't doing it. I mean, again, I'm not suggesting you start out by sending citations or nothing, but at least a conversation.
I think if you put them on notice and let them know that it could potentially be a code violation, that would add protective monetary penalties that might motivate them to actually put cameras up or do something.
Okay, that's a conversation that we can have.
Is that something we could do now?
We can have that conversation with them.
Because that costs a township, now we got to dispose of 60 tires. And that's pricey to do, but that's why they dumped them there.
Right.
In the first place, so.
Okay, any other questions from the board? No.
Yes, a couple. What, which model of the board?
Mach-E, like KS4 or I don't know.
Just curious, you know, I watch these days, the price difference between that and the Tesla.
Um.
You said about $8,000.
That was what the Ford, the gas powered engine, so Tesla's now they've been down a little bit. I think the Tesla performance version's around 52 and I think this was around 57. But it's got substantially more room inside than the one we have.
Chief, can you explain the background on the police forces probably using the Mach-E? If you could, kind of, nationwide?
So they were tested by the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department and the Michigan State Police, who are the two entities that test police cars for service. They passed both tests very well. They haven't, the Tesla hasn't been tested. So one of the things we wanted to do with this was put the car in control. And having one that's been passed or has passed these tests is something I would prefer for someone who doesn't patrol. I wouldn't want to just throw any car in.
Should you take on the, these battery fires that?
They're horrible. I hope we don't have one.
That's what I was going to say, well, because Sarah, Police Chief's got plans.
Me too. I have plans. So yeah, I think to my knowledge, we've had one in the township. And it was bad, it had been closing the road for a couple hours while they had to get it out, so.
Thanks, Marjorie. Yes, Mr. Gold.
I'm curious, does our local fire company have a method for fighting EV fires?
Well, they certainly have a method. Now, how effective it is, I don't know, but they fought the fire that we had.
Good question, because I talked to Steve Pound about. They have a program, they have, oh, let's say, there's an EV fire, here's what we're going to do, not just spray. I talked to Steve Pound about that last week. He was the former fire chief in Barrow and we had a lengthy conversation about it. And that's one of his concerns because right now they have a blanket that they put over the cars, but it has not been approved yet. So the technology's there, but the actual, you know, to put out fires is not there yet. That came right from him last week. So they have concerns about the electric cars and being in houses and garages and so forth. So, but we don't have a choice right now. They're doing what the best they can with what the resources they have. And it was about three and a half hours till that fire was extinguished on, to, to recently. And it was on electric car. So my comment last year was what happens when we have a row of EV vehicles out back here at our township buildings, our community assets, and they start going on fire? We lose everything. So I'm very curious about fire companies and how they're going to approach a parking lot full of EVs, especially in a township building.
That's a valid concern and I'm sure they would love to have that conversation with you. So you should follow up with that.
Me? I said don't get the EVs.
I had one more question.
Okay.
Regarding the tires on the stream cleanup, the property behind the Greek restaurant is actually township property. And I'm wondering, I don't know how far the cleanup went, but if it went along Goose Creek behind Aldi, that is now all township owned. So should we be placing do not dump, you know, some fines or whatever back along that shopping center, the Aldi?
Like no dumping signs back behind the Aldi? It's another conversation maybe we can have. If it, I mean, do you find that those signs are effective?
Yeah. I'm pretty sure that people don't get tired because they're not supposed to go.
Tell people, this is an area where people have dumped before, so if you want to try it again, you know, it's a good location to try it. That's what those signs tell me.
Well, there's no cameras there either. That's probably a good reason why they're doing it.
Nate, myself, did that actual strip from the Greek, behind that olive tree, whatever it is that never got going, we did that piece of the Goose Creek. And natural fact, it was cleaner than the year before. The township had removed those old diesel tanks that have been dumped in there. And I'll, one observation of myself, I've been doing this stream cleanup for probably 15 years. What is great is I see a lot less plastic bags now than I used to see 10 years ago. So we have made a difference.
That's very true.
MS4 too.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief. One item of note too here, because we have the reports from our ambulance companies from Good Fellowship, is that they met with Westchester Fire and decided to remove some of their automatic dispatches from some fire calls that I thought was interesting. So now with some fire calls from Westchester, they're not going to automatically dispatch the ambulance from Good Fellowship. But I thought was, was good that they have that conversation and work that out.
Just to comment on that, I know we've talked about the, with the park companies about this, this situation. There was obviously some kind of fire service call that was, I don't know whether it was in our township or over in East Bradford, but down Sunset Hollow, I saw at least five fire trucks go. And they're basically transporting people to go to what probably needs one truck to. but down Sunset Hollow, I saw at least five fire trucks go, and they're basically transporting people to go to what probably needs one truck to attend. So it's again down to this issue of, everybody has a lot of equipment, but they don't have just equipment to get more people to the scene to help, versus the expense of providing everybody with multiple trucks that aren't needed for the kind of, usually needed for the kind of issues they have to deal with. So it was just a reminder to me to continue to push our fire companies about their counter programs and the duplication as involved.
Thanks, Sean. Yeah, something to speak about in the fire coalition meetings, maybe, and also, I mean, in the COG. And we have a Cato conference that we're planning for the fall, we're looking for topics, so that's something that I think that a lot of municipalities are thinking about in short run as well.
There actually is a topic that we're going to bring up with the sharing of equipment, that I talked to Steve about, that's about a $2.5 million piece of equipment, and what they use is to block when there's emergencies. Right now, unfortunately, they're using a fire truck that costs about $1.5 million, and four people are sitting in that truck, and there is a blocking vehicle that the county has, Chester County has, but it takes about an hour to get it there. So all the municipalities are looking together now to purchase this blocking vehicle, because they said the stats on emergency personnel getting hurt, injured, or death have increased substantially over the past five years. So they're looking at the community to get their own, be able to share it. So that's the first piece of equipment we're actually talking about now, share, so that's going to be, probably going to get our elected officials at that meeting to help us. From funding standpoint, support, that's probably going to be, our next April meeting's already set for the agenda, so it's probably going to be maybe June timeframe, somewhere around there, we're going to be talking about, that's our first piece of equipment, and that's the first start that we're doing.
Thank you, Tina. All right.
Moving on to the next agenda item, which is Board of Supervisors announcements, I'm going to start to my left with Nate, do you have any announcements, Nate?
Yeah. Two twenty, meeting with Roseanne McGrath, newly approved HR consultant. Two twenty-two tour led by Chief Carroll of the Police Department. Two twenty-two attended historic commission meeting. Two twenty-seven, meeting with Michael Bonner, newly appointed zoning hearing board alternative. Two twenty-eight, attempted to attend the state of Stormwater Symposium, but unable to hear, and the closed captioning is not working, along with Tim Ray.
I couldn't get on either of those, buddy.
Yeah, it was horrible.
Three-two and three, three-nine, attended the supervisor boot camp, and three-sixteen, attended the Chester Ridley Crumb Watershed's annual spring cleanup of Goose Creek. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Okay, two twenty-two, we had our fire and MS coalition, our next one's going to be in April timeframe. Two twenty-three, we met with solicitor on executive session on our Wawa. Two twenty-seven, interviewed Mr. Bonner for the zoning board. Two twenty-eight, again, Stormwater to Quality, that we paid seven dollars for. Three-nine, let's see, three-seventeen, I also went to something sponsored by the Chester County Business and Industry Chamber, just some community things. We did behind the scenes with QVC, met with the president and CEO and some of the issues that they're having, so that was a good meeting. Three-eight, met with Government Affairs, sponsored by the Chester County Business and Industry, working on some issues right now for attainable housing for young people, so it's a special committee we're working on. And three-eleven, met with Government Building, John and I met, and Chris took the government on their plans for the mental health situation. We wanted to know what the mobile health units were doing, and the hidden behavioral, and that's what the chief met with us too on that. And they're in the process of developing and implementing a more comprehensive, effective, and accessible mental and behavioral health crisis response team for all Chester County residents, and it's almost ready to be low lives, so we wanted to work out the logistics between the police and the township. Three-fifteen, did the watershed at Goose Creek, and also attended with, sponsored by CRC Watershed. They had a science on tap learning kind of fundraiser for them, and it was at the Artory, and it was on Beverse, so it was an interesting conversation, and how it affects the community and the township and the dams. And then the last thing, on three-thirteen, I went to the History Center, it was sponsored, very empowering, one nurturing woman in the workforce, which is very empowering and interesting. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Hoffman?
Yeah, on Wednesday, February the twenty-first, attended virtually the PSAT's meeting of towns that serve ten thousand population. And then you really need to report there, it's the same story all over, problems with fire and EMS services. It's a, it's common theme throughout in the entire state of Pennsylvania. On Tuesday, February the twenty-seventh, I attended the interview with Mr. Bonner for the zoning hearing board. On Thursday, February twenty-ninth, attended the Cameron Gathering for Cheryl Wilkinson, retired township, after many years of service. Monday, March the eleventh, attended the meeting with the Chester County staff on the three-prong initiatives that they are initiating for mental health, and that consists of three prongs, first is who you call, and that's a 988 call center, who are going to be establishing. The second thing is who are you going to respond, and they were putting onto the street group on mental health units, and that would consist of three units of two, twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and can respond to emergency health cases within the, within Chester County. And then the third prong of that three-pronged approach is where do you get further help, and that is the opening of the Behavioral Health Center here by the hospital, and working in conjunction with the assisting services instead of being currently provided by HOG and other mental health providers. On Saturday, March the sixteenth, attended the CRC Creek cleanup along with many of the members of the board here. And then on today, Tuesday, March nineteenth, a week, Tina, Chris, and I conducted our monthly Board Liaison Meeting with the police U-CO. That concludes my...
Thank you. Mr. Walsh?
Yeah, I attended many of the same meetings that have already been described, I do want to say it was noteworthy. Most noteworthy was the March eleventh meeting with the Chesapeake County personnel on the new behavioral health crisis response program. I thought that was very informative, it is modeled after a standard of care that's been proven elsewhere in different states. Chief was in attendance, I hope you feel it will help lessen the demand on our own police resources, given its time, it looks all quizzical.
Not by the percentage they said.
But not by the percentage they said, yes, but it's, it's going to roll out soon, and we really need to make sure we do a good job communicating that through our various avenues that we can do, do it and promote it. On March the thirteenth was a special meeting of the Pension Committee to review the eleven responses received to our RFP for Investment Advisory Services, since Vanguard's no longer going to provide that service. The Pension Committee selected three companies to move forward to the interview phase, which is scheduled for later this month, and I did participate in the Creek Cleanup, which was always a pleasure, which I...
Great, thank you. Just two additional announcements, we met tonight in a very brief executive session to discuss the conditional use of the hearing. And also, this Saturday, I believe, the twenty-third, is going to be the Township Egg Hunt at ten o'clock at Community Market.
Which may get postponed, it's going to be four in the morning.
Oh, really?
It's a Sunday, potentially it's Sunday.
So it's Sunday, oh, the...
They have not made that call yet.
Oh, good call yet, anyway.
It's a good chance.
Watch the weather, yes, okay, thank you. All right, moving on to item number fifteen, which is Township Managers' announcements. Mr. Bishore?
Madam Chair, I only have a few announcements. The first item is, the E News will go out at the end of this week for March, so we're working on completing that now. In addition to the Easter Egg Hunt, the department, the Recreation Department has the Cherry Blossom Bus Trip scheduled for April sixth. So I believe you can register for that online through the township website.
There are seats available on that?
I don't know, but I know it's coming up, so I don't know if there are still seats available. Ken, Mr. Lear was off today, so I didn't get to check with him in advance. Our EV project here at the municipal complex is completed, as Chief Carroll said, everything is operational now, everything's been programmed accordingly by our facility superintendent. Mike Kakko, he did prepare a punch list, and that was submitted to Chris Peterson, I believe those outstanding punch list items have been addressed. There's one more payment application that'd be completed, but once those punch list items are addressed, then we'll complete the final payment for the project. And then finally, the solar bids were opened on March twelfth, and those will be before the board for a notice of intent to award at the April second meeting.
All right.
Those are all my announcements.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, I think it was two meetings ago, we talked about getting an energy conservation analysis done, a little bit of that.
I don't remember going forward with that, but I do remember the question being asked of whether or not we've ever done that, that's not something we've ever done before.
Was that something we could ask Mike?
Mike Kakko?
Actually, I recall that Henry Alexander has expressed with us, I really liked the SAC to talk about how best to approach it, because I think Henry has got some background knowledge and experience, he can direct...
And an energy conservation...
Energy audits.
Okay, and energy audit, yeah, okay.
Okay.
I mean, they should just, the SAC should discuss it and have a guidance, recommendation for staff on the board to consider.
I don't know if we can add that to this month's agenda?
I haven't looked at the draft agenda that Henry's...
He sent it around, it might be something that we do at our next meeting, okay.
Yes, that draft.
He didn't, yes, yes. Okay, moving on to item number sixteen, which is Township Engineers' announcements.
So, a couple announcements for Stormwater, one I've already made, I'll make it again, the renewal for MS4 permit was submitted to the EP Electronically Transmittural on March fifth. Paper copy was sent this week, we have to send both paper and electronic, and we'll see what goes from there. Last time it took them fourteen months to issue a permit, so we'll see. But we'll see how long this one takes. Some great stuff announcements, the Phase One, Phase Two of the Fifty-Five and Older Woodlands at Great Lakes Community have been turned over to the HOA, so I've been getting a lot of questions from the HOA about things in their now owned area. Additionally, on last Wednesday, I did a punch list walk with NV Homes for Phase One, Phase Two of the single-family homes. So the agreement between NV and Homes and RLD is that NV has to give the RLD back the curb lanes and sidewalks, so they can respond to any damage caused by construction of the homes before RLD, then we'll do the road punch list. So I walked Phase One and Phase Two of the singles, so it's the lower seven houses of, of Gershwin and Aldi area of Phase One, which is Bernstein, to, to Bernstein to the left, that old area, we walked it, we painted all the, all the areas that they have to repair or replace with NV Homes and the concrete contractor. So NV now has to repair all that, turn over to RLD before RLD, and then we'll request a punch list for those roads. Additionally, I did receive notice from Rick Rauske that Phase Six, the earthwork will commence by the end of this week.
End of this week?
Yes. They have not submitted the plans yet, but they're allowed to remove trees and start the bulk earthwork, earthwork under the approved and recorded build-along plan. And then they cannot sell, they cannot do any house projects or sell houses until, can they sell lots, until they have accorded the Phase Six plans. So until those come through with the process, all they can do is get started on the bulk stuff, and they're already, according to Ray, they're supposed to get started by the end of this week, Phase Six.
Is that the last phase, Phase Six?
That's the last phase.
Yes.
Do you know if the final quote for the streets have been done?
Not done yet.
Even for what was just turned over to homeowners, is that the quote? Do we have to ask for that?
Yes.
Okay. I took through the other day, it certainly looks like Phase Six is already being worked on, but...
Well, Phase Six is just some houses in the Fifty-Five and Older community, and those roads have not been installed yet. And then the pieces are off the back of some of the, where the singles are, the executive singles.
How, if at all, will this lawsuit against NV Homes regarding the NID fees, lack of transparency, is there possibility that the township is going to somehow be attained with them?
I can't speak to that.
I don't think so, I mean, you know, people can bring in whoever they want in the lawsuit, but... It, it deals with disclosures that the parties made, it has nothing to do with the township. Dislosures that this, this particular rent of, and they certified class, you know, that there were different disclosures that shouldn't have been made about the interest charges on it, so, it has nothing to do with disclosing anything that it made, so. Not to say that, but to find it, can't try to bring in township, but I don't see the township having any liability whatsoever.
Well, I quickly just scanned through the lawsuit, and there are two parties, NV Arh Homes, and then also Unicap, which is the administrator of the NID, and if I recall reading correctly, it said the reason they remain this defendant, Unicap, is because they created the NID with fees, thinking, ah, the West Coast Township created the NID.
Yeah, West Coast Township approved the creation of a neighborhood, approved a district, but Unicap, they, the township had nothing to do with the assessment, so the township has no say over whether the assessment's hard, so.
And that was my point, my public comment, and I didn't break it up, because I get all nervous up there. The, I forget where I was going. Up until this point, the homeowners, some of them have been living there since maybe as early as twenty twenty, but twenty twenty-one, they're just now finding out, because they, they weren't involved with the HOA. They don't, to my knowledge, have representation on the NID board, so just, the floodgates have been opened now that...
Margie, you have to understand, there's a whole, there's two different processes, so the agreements with the township are specifically to the public improvements, and the escrow agreements are in place for that, and a hundred and ten percent of those cost of improvements are put in, put into escrow accounts here. That's a separate process that potentially issues that HOA has. There's an entire new market out there with lawyers and engineers who do the transition phase from a declarant and a developer to an HOA. They will be represented, and they will, their interest will be protected through that process, but that is a separate process to the township.
What about the wayside public improvement?
Anything that's, anything that's on the final plan, that Brian determines has to have an opinion and a program of cost, and put in the escrow agreement, that's something that the township inspects, makes sure it's done per plan, and then releases the escrow. So that process is separate then, maybe facilities that they were guaranteed under their agreements of sale, their HOA declarations, we don't have, the township has control of that.
Set back to the Fifty-Five and Older phases after this turnover to the residents, that's on a private street, so I'm asking, was escrow with help for private street?
Yes, there's still escrow for the final paving of those streets.
You mentioned that someone's been living there since twenty twenty-one and doesn't understand the NID fee, because we send the fees out every year, right, we're responsible for collecting these fees.
We're not responsible for collecting the...
But we send the bills out.
We do not send the bills out, the bills are sent out by a third party, the only time the township gets...
Oh, but we have to collect on them.
Correct, on the length of season.
Thank you.
No, that, oh, I don't remember the NID fees, where, I'm just, what's the law?
Well, and I'm going to say this, because we're on our YouTube channel, Mr. Walsh and I said at the most recent meeting that we believe that there needs to be clearer, clearer dialogue with the new property owners about the NID fees, because something's being lost in the translation.
Yeah, I looked at that lawsuit, you know, Chris and Chad, it's like one sales agent for NV Homes said something to somebody and they didn't understand it, and now it's a lawsuit, so, that's my interpretation of reading it.
Are there any other announcements, Brian?
No, that's all I have.
Okay.
Do you guys have any questions for me?
I do have.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number seventeen, which is the zoning officers' announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two quick updates on the zoning hearing board. The case number zero one dash twenty twenty-four for the West Coast Township in Center Bailey Pike, the meeting was last night. It was a rather long meeting, however, the, all of the testimony has been completed. They are leaving the hearing open until April first, the applicant has some information to get to the zoning hearing. Uh, the applicant has some information to get to the zoning hearing board, and then after that information is, uh, received, a decision will be rendered within the required timeframe. Uh, they also rendered the decision on 205 Carter Drive, uh, which they had granted. Um, so 205 Carter Drive was granted. All of their reliefs pertaining to their application for the...
Which is the proposed hotel.
Right, yeah. Um, and then just, uh, looking ahead, um, this month in March, we've received three land development applications, uh, one for 1052 Andrew Drive, uh, one for 21 Hagerty Boulevard, and the last for 800 East Virginia Ave. So it will be coming for you guys at some point, but they would just received, um, two on March 5th and one on March 15th.
So sometime in April, later April?
Oh, yeah. Probably September, October.
Late summer, early fall.
Way off. Well, they also have to go through the whole out of ages and everything.
Oh, okay, okay.
Brian Shelby, there will be an extensive list of items to...
Our reviews, they'll go before the planning permission and then...
Right, the whole process. Got it, okay, so we'll see this in September, maybe, okay.
Maybe not till 2025.
Maybe not till 2025. Any other, any questions for Shelby from the board? No? No? Okay, any questions from the public? Yes, Mr. May?
Um, regarding Wawa and the conditional use, what, what recourse do they have now? Can they take that, and I don't understand the process, so, um, can they take that to a higher jurisdiction if they want? And what's the likelihood that that's going to happen? Because it seems like a, I mean, I was for Wawa, but the traffic was an issue. Um, that has to be corrected. Um, they will take it though, you think, to a higher court?
I don't know what they're going to do. I'm gonna defer to our...
They have the right to file an appeal in court, comma, please, they have to do it to their...
What sense do you have?
I think that they'll file an appeal. I think they spent a lot of money to get a denial. I think that they'll take a shot at filing an appeal.
Yeah.
Remains to be seen.
I, I, just one comment. I, I thought that one of the initial meetings, when they sold the whole renovation, when they were trying to get the variance, I guess, the 6,400 square feet, they sold it, the solution of changing the whole shopping center. And it was a good message that they sent initially, but then when they didn't get the variance, they kind of just like backed up. And, you know, so more, more to be revealed, I guess, so.
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
Good question, thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Okay. There's no other questions for Shelby, we'll move on to number 18, which is the approval of the meeting minutes of February 20th, 2024. Are there any changes to the minutes that are significant? Otherwise...
I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February the 20th, 20th.
I'll second it. I, did you apply any taxes?
No. Okay, so you have a motion and a second. Um, any public comment on the meeting minutes, February 20th, 2024? Okay, hearing done. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And item number 19, which is the approval of the treasurer's report and the bills to be paid. Are there any comments or questions on the treasurer's report?
I had one question. I'm just wondering, uh, okay, there's no page number here, so I can't even reference it, but, um, $633.75 was sent for a farmer block hearing. Just wondering what that was for.
Was that on the manual plus?
It's on the invoice list by GL account.
Okay.
That was page nine. There is, it's on page nine. Pretty smoky end.
So that's, uh, is that the legal fee?
It just says a hearing.
That was a very, that was a one zoning hearing, not Holcomb Pike and Grove.
Oh, okay.
It's probably papers on the...
Yeah, James, 637, for Farmer Block, and James Finland, that was the general who was seeing against the... And the train, I believe, is the transparent.
All right, I have no other questions. Any other questions, any other questions on the bills?
I have another question. Uh, the manual, there's a bill for $3,472 for Pico Energy for 825 Washington Street for one month. What, what is that for?
I believe that's a pump station.
Yeah, it's a pump station.
It's a pump station.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Thank you.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Is there any public comment or questions on the bills to be paid? Yes, it's for...
I had many, but it takes a committee to ask them all, so I'll be tasked.
You can also feel free to email.
You can also email Christine as well.
Yeah.
I'll be back there some other thing, my, or not, I really don't like being paid.
Okay, wait, we have a motion and a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.